Yes, Mayor, all members are present here today. And the notice of this meeting was posted at 2:00 PM on February 25th.
On public conferences, we change the venue location.
Public hearing.
No, I don't believe so.
Any presentations or confirmations? And I've got a short report. Last week, I was invited to go to UTEN to the space program. And I was amazed. It was all top secret. We couldn't take pictures. Phones would be dipped in acid if we did. But thinking on a printer, I think back on old school skills. And they kept talking about a printer and how a printer made all these tools and gadgets and stuff that they use in space. And for the defense department, the Air Force. But these are 3D printers. And so they ran us through, we spent three and a half hours at the main school, at the Becker Building. And they showed us a 3D printer. They feed it dust. And they're programmed to make certain items. Well, these printers were going to town. Sometimes it takes them hours to do this. But they showed us this little tiny figurine about five inches of an inch. And you look at it, and it was an astronaut. But then you take a magnifying glass and you see NASA written on it, Ejection C. And all of a sudden, you can't see with a naked eye. So they ran us through the whole thing. And one thing that really stood out was all the scientists that were there were young, I call them young kids. It's like they were all under thirty. All PhDs. Everyone, and some working on their second PhDs. And when I was talking to the director of the school, he said they all come from lower income of El Paso. And they go through the program. And once their PhD, get their PhDs, they're hired by the school as scientists. And it was amazing, says, we do this, we're trying to keep the kids from El Paso, in El Paso, and keep the knowledge and all that here in town. So they ran us, it was an eight-hour day that we spent going from building to building. And some buildings were in the burrows, real non-conspicuous buildings. They looked like they might have been a healthcare center or something like that. And then there again, they says, okay, everybody turn your cell phone off. And it only takes to certain departments, not all of them. And I was talking to one of our, one of my friends, and I'm saying, no, they're only showing us what they want us to see. Because no one was wearing their space, their lab suits, everything like that, or protective gear, nor ordinary clothes. But these kids were talking way, way beyond all of us. And I was just, you know, going, wow, look at this. A wealth of knowledge, and these kids were so young. And I'm going back and I was comparing against my grandsons, my grandson's twenty-seven years old. These kids look younger. And they've got this level of education and working on the space program. But it was amazing. Then they took us to Vegas, to an airport they had built. And that's where the propulsion center is at. And it shows the different engines that they use. And the biggest one was probably about eight inches long. And it looks like a jet nozzle, I mean, a water nozzle on your hose. But that creates 500 pounds of thrust. And that's for the vertical, when they're coming in and leaving. And then there's another smaller, probably about two inches. And that is to stabilize the craft when it lands. And that is like five ounces thrust, and there's sixty down the board around whatever equipment they're gonna land on there. But it's an awesome tour, and we're gonna talk more about it actually in the agenda, because we're proposing to go ahead and approve Saul Ross applying for one of the grants. Those grants are a lot, millions of dollars is what it comes out to. So it'd be a big boost for Saul Ross, you know, for their student body, an increase in it, and also bringing professors. And possibly bringing in big kids from, you know, other states in here to the space program. Because it's almost non-existent. El Paso is really having together. And so then, with that, I applaud them for having that program there and what they're doing with their kids to keep them in in El Paso. And that's the same thing they're trying to do here in case Saul Ross gets that grant for the kids, or not only kids, anybody interested in these courses. And they're gonna be a two-year course and a four-year course. It'll be from the tractors to sheet metal workers, engineers, just different variety of occupations that are tied in with the space program. So we'll talk about it later on. So with that, we'll move on to the city attorney report.
Okay, let's go to the city manager report.
Kind of echoing Mr. Fontaine. I'm gonna jinx myself, guys. It has been fairly quiet. The city is running fairly smoothly. A few things that I wanted to discuss, I've asked the different departments if there's something they wanted to let you guys know. I know that we have them scheduled for their quarterly reports. But things change from day to day. I did want to provide you with an update from each of the departments that had an update where we're at. With the water, wastewater and sanitation, they hired two new team members. Caitlin Hardy with the wastewater treatment plant and Priscilla Lopez as a worker one meter reader. Caitlin does come to us from another city. She was a godsend. She actually applied for a different job, but she has licenses in wastewater and water. She also has her laboratory license. And this is a big impact for our department. I kindly gave her over, knowing that she will be a good asset. She's already, we're pushing her through her ninety days faster than she intended. We've got her signed up for training. We really want her to move forward and help the city of Alpine, and she is beyond eager. I got to visit with her. She's excited. She's a fresh breath of air. She's just, she jumped in, doesn't mind getting dirty. And Priscilla is also hit the ground running. We've had a few individuals decide to resign. Priscilla has hit the ground trying to learn where all the meters are in the city of Alpine. We now have moved your estimate from about twenty-eight hundred to twenty-nine hundred. She's been a great asset. The other employees are working well with her, trying to show her the ropes, where things are, how to read them. They are catching up faster than anticipated, so we're very proud. Since we've hired Mr. Seager, they continue to align the structure and the duties of the individuals within the department. Instead of having a title without the responsibility, or even sometimes the understanding, it's what are these employees capable, reevaluating them, putting them in the positions that they know that they'll excel in, providing the training, constantly approving and assisting with my credit card for the city to get them registered for classes. It's not just a sporadic thing. It's no, we want to encourage them, we want them trained, we want them in the field to understand what they're doing, why they're doing, and how it's such a big impact on the city of Alpine. At the end, we know that this will be better for the citizens and how we adequately prepare and face for everything that's changing moving forward. So really excited about the changes. I don't know how much Mr. Seager is, but it's been a lot, working with our engineers, working with the state deadlines, getting extensions or TCQ issues. Employees, he's building up a solid team, and that's what we need. The gas department, I told Randy that this is not his year. Gas is rarely spoken of. They kind of just slide through the year, everything goes well. We've had some hiccups. He's realized that. He knows that this is, this is a wake-up call. We need to do our due diligence. And one thing he discussed with me was bringing in a specialist for these regulators. This is not an extravagant cost to the city. It's budgeted. So he brought in a specialist to help with the Alpine and Fort Davis city gates, where we've had the most issues and concerns. This is where the gas comes into the system for the city. As a result, his team is really getting some hands-on education. Not only in dealing with this emergency situation, but also learning something that they've never touched. The regulators haven't been maintained, well, your phrase, sorry. They've been maintained, but they've never understood and had to replace them. How they work, how you can put them in wrong, how you can change them, set them. So it has provided them the training for the installation, the maintenance, and the troubleshooting. They're physically getting to see it and work with it. And it's not a paper manual. It's a full-blown system that they're having to weld and cut and insert and pull apart and understanding, you know, for me, debris, and how it even gets in the system and dust and those little particles build up and fog things, and how do you clean it out in the proper way? So this has been a really good screening experience for them, get them out in the field beyond their normal scope. This is information that they'll be able to take with them and that the city can utilize moving forward for any other hiccups. So the public works department, I am sure that everyone has seen Eddie's crew somewhere at some point all over the city of Alpine. The colder months, they're kind of trying to patch potholes, do the odds and ends that they don't get during paving season. Well, that paving season's coming. And they are ready to start seal coating in April. They'll be starting on the southwest side of Alpine. So if you live in that area, they'll be over there starting their projects. And then they will continue throughout the whole entire city. They don't target just one area. They do look at every aspect of the city to ensure that they continue the maintenance for the different sections or wards of Alpine. Another favorite, especially amongst kids, the swimming pool. We are getting that ready. It is a tedious process. We do have to clean it up, we have to fill the pool. The pool ideally wasn't designed to always be drained, but unfortunately, when it was remodeled, there was some glitches. So in the safety of the structure of the pool, it does get drained. They're gonna put a fresh coat of paint. And then, of course, we start filling it up and making sure there's no leaks, no cracks, no breaks. And then, in the next month or so, you'll start seeing the proposals for the pool rates, the hiring of new lifeguards. We're excited. I know in 2020, with the pool not being open, it was a bit rough for people. In 2021, we were open. We do have limited staffing with the pool, so there are days that it's not open, we just don't have lifeguards. And of course, weather is never our friend when it comes to the pool. But we really are excited, looking forward to this pool season, getting everyone out, especially swimming, get them in that pool. And then, moving into this month, when I put this together, it was February, we're in March now. We're gonna start working with the utility departments. We tried to do an initial kickoff meeting. We still do have an open contract with Jarrett Dirtwork for several more sections to be completed for the city of Alpine. These are rebuilds. This is where he tears everything up, puts all new in for paving. So we'll have a kickoff meeting so that the utilities can be slightly prepared. As we look at the projects with paving, all of the utility departments and the public works have started vocalizing and are more aware of the concern. When we go in and we sign these contracts and we do this paving, to have them involved in the initial process, it's important for them because the paving gets approved, and then they're sitting there like, whoa, you want us to replace what now? So we're gonna finish the current contract because we do have it in place, and the utilities will work with the public works as well to kind of start better planning. When we pull up a road, we want to ensure that if we need to replace water lines or gas lines or sewer lines, that the departments are prepared. It's not just having the staff, but a lot of times, we don't have the material. Unfortunately, material today is a lot harder to obtain in a timely manner. I know that there are several backward items for the water department, twelve to thirteen weeks out. So as we go through this, end of this contract, we're gonna do our best to try and replace what we can with the streets that are going to be repaved. And then hopefully, moving forward, everyone will be on the same page, sit down, have that conversation. So when council is presented with, we want to rebuild or we want to repave, and this is what we're looking at. It's not, we just rebuilt it and now we're cutting it out. So that we were, like I said, plan is the key word here. So they're excited. Well, I say everyone's excited, that's how they act. And from the administration and finance side, I, we had met prior to the end of the filing deadline. So elections, 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 we want everyone out there voting. Today's last day to vote for county. Ward two is unopposed with Ms. Rodriguez. Ward four is unopposed with Mr. Sambate. And the mayor does have two candidates, Catherine Eaves and Amit Rong. So just want to get that information out there so that everyone is aware. On the finance side, we continue to work with the audit. I don't think it's been as vocal as it has in the past. So we continue to provide supporting documentation to our auditors. This includes everything from copies of invoices to journal entries to contracts, any little thing that can support and back some of the changes that we've made. We also have what we consider an audit tracker. It's about 200 questions and requests. So we use that as a guideline to make sure we provided everything they need to help properly audit our records. I don't have any insight as to the possible outcome of our audit. I know that overall, there's been definite improvements in how we manage and provide supporting documentation and keeping track of everything. The only concern, and it's been a concern for multiple years, the procurement. It is hard being in a small town. We did put in some policies. They're very simple. One of the requirements for me coming down is to have that procurement policy so that we don't have it on the audit again to ensure that we follow the state guidelines, our own guidelines, to get all that information. All of our departments do an awesome job. It is not easy when you have, you know, fifteen people coming at you, I need this to fix this, and I need this to fix that, and ensuring, okay, I just need it fixed, just go get it, and not realizing, okay, I need my purchase order, I need my quotes, I need my before I can move forward. So we're working on those. And then, the final improvements at the former Sunshine House are finally underway. We were pending, we had an inspection, but we were pending final approval on the fire plan, fire extinguishers, making sure the building was safe. So we've contacted a fire extinguisher company to come out, and they've done that. They've ensured we've got everything covered. The last thing that we had, we signed a contract with Big Ben Telephone when this project started. So we've done some of the legwork. We did not go through with having it all put in until we had everything kind of squared away. So we're just currently pending the phone and internet connections for all of the desk locations and all of the different offices. Congratulations to Tucker Gandy. He has taken another job, but he was our contact to Big Ben Telephone for this project. So it was a bit of a shock when I asked, hey, we're ready, and he no longer works there. So they're gonna assign this to someone else, and Gio has also reached out. So after we get that connection, the finance team will move over first, and then we'll do a mask PSA on the billing, and then we'll switch them over there as well. It also gives them time to clean up, if you've ever seen the piles and documentation. I'm the reason for it. I like to keep everything. But it gives them the opportunity to clean it up and go through it before they have to box everything and move. And we're not boxing things we don't need. Better to go into a clean, newly remodeled building with what we need and not things that are considered trash or unwanted. And the last one, a little HR update. I have Ms. Crespo running around doing fifty thousand things. I don't think she realized the extent of HR. She's been helping with the new hire team members. I mentioned the two for the water and wastewater. We've also hired an executive assistant to assist me with trying to get things taken care of. She started today. I only gave her a list of forty or fifty things. And we are continuing to strategize our advertising options. You may have heard on the radio lately, are you interested in bugs, playing in the dirt? Why not work for the water department? We're trying to make it a little bit more lively. I don't want to say we're boring, but in the end, we really are. We want to encourage employees to work here. We're also looking at every aspect that's available to us, the newspaper, the paper, TML, and then also the different designated organizations for each field. So water has one, gas has one, and getting that information out there. It does come with a little bit of a cost, but Lorna and I have been working through that to make sure. We just, we're growing, and we want our staff to grow with us, and we want to encourage people to work here. We just need to get the word out there. How long, we, poor Darryl gets our, can we use your Facebook? He is one of the most viewed local Facebook pages for the city, and a lot of that information gets out there. So you'll start seeing more and more pop-ups for PSAs with him. The biggest change is the employee handbook. This has been a back and forth with council for four years, probably longer. And the reason we're bringing it back before council is we've had changes in federal state law, and we want to make sure that they're properly described in the employee handbook. The current one is not, you know, a horrible handbook. It does leave room for questions in the gray areas, and well, what about this? And the policy says this. And what we're trying to do is ensure that when we talk about FMLA, that the employee fully understands the process, the procedures, how long it entails. Do you qualify, do you not qualify? People don't realize sometimes that FMLA is available, but there's a process and procedures in order to use it. It also doesn't guarantee, you know, a pay. Some people say, well, my former job, I got paid for FMLA. The city doesn't do that, and providing that type of detailed information. So when we have employees who do get sick and have to utilize it, understand the process they can utilize. The Military Leave Act, that one's also important. Nursing mothers, that one's also important. But to provide that clear guidance, and not just a general one paragraph, is this is an option. Also, it allows supervisors a little direction as well, because if you notice in our handbook, and if you haven't read it, I'm more than happy to send you a copy. It will say dependent are up to the supervisor, the department head. Well, we have department heads and supervisors who come back and are like, well, what should I do? And we want them to fully be able to say, this is the process, this is the steps. And it gives them that confidence that when they have employees reach out to them, that they can manage that, and they're not having to second guess or to, hey, I'll get back with you, I'm not sure. No, it's all documented. The other big thing you heard me mention, of course, is employee benefits. We've been working with all the departments to get a better understanding of the functionality of departments. One of the employee benefits is to know how you can succeed in the city of Alpine. How you can move up, how do you get promoted, how do you get a pay increase? How come this department gets a differential and this department doesn't? The city's gone back and forth for four years on this, that you have some employees who are like, hey, wait, that was an option, and now it's not. So we want to finalize that and make it very clear, and we want it to be, I guess the term I should say, is this fair across the board? I don't know if every department has a differential, but there are options to be able to provide that clearly outlined in the policy manual so that if I wanted to come work here, I know that I can get promoted, I can get merit raises, I can get differentials. I know that if I go get my class B water or wastewater, that I'm gonna give a little something for it, because at the end, I'm responsible TCQ, it's my name, it's mine that gets, you know, the citation. So providing that detailed information, better defining our workman's comp policies, our retirement. We have a lot of younger individuals applying. It's giving them that encouragement that you want to stay here, retirement is really important. Our health insurance is really important. Your parents cover you until you're twenty-six, and then if something happens, you want to have that insurance, that backup to help you with that. And the last big thing, the city of Alpine is required by state for some mandatory training. We are required to have cybersecurity, which all of our council members today should have received an email. It does apply to city council as well. Are required to have ethics training, and these are annual. And then, we require the sexual harassment. We think it's important, especially with having such a diverse work staff, that we ensure that our employees understand that we're providing you the education because we don't tolerate it. The cyber security is actually passed down from the state. We are required to do that annually. So those who've been recently employed have already taken it, and Lorna has set everyone up with the new one. And then the ethics comes down from some of our grants. When we were audited for some of our grants, it was determined we did not have a sound ethics policy and procedures to ensure people understood ethics. And the council approved an ethics policy, and we were fortunate that TML does offer an online ethics for local government. It's also encouraged by elected officials, TML does offer you an elected official ethics policy training. So that is my update. Are there any questions? So yes, you have several that are in the same age bracket, and there were some that were older. And then there's some that we inherited from WTG that are different than what we had. Oh, definitely. When I spoke to Randy, he was, this is, this is a big learning experience for them, and to be able to like, take it apart and understand the dynamics and the structure of it, it does help. Yes, so it was brought to our attention on the public hearings. When we post a public hearing, it's posted with a date and time and a location. We had some changes and non-confirmation, which room we were using for what, with the county having their elections and then, of course, the city council meeting. So when it was posted, at the time, it was posted for the council chambers. So we're not meeting in the council chambers, and to ensure that we do this properly, we'd like to post until the next meeting, which will be March. So that can be properly posted.
On the consent agenda tonight, we do have approval of the February fifteenth, 2022, regular meeting minutes and approval of proposals for road material for Ergon, CSA, and capital aggregates.
So the first item is to discuss the added fee for sanitation in our ordinance. It does indicate that the city does add a support our current contract, which was just signed today. I do have included in your packets a breakdown. Can you share my screen here? A little bit easier to talk about it. And it may be hard to see, but it was available online for the public. So I cannot explain, tell you or why the city put the rates ten years ago. I was not employed with the city at the time this contract was signed. The first sheet provided, and I indicated at the top, was considered a current sanitation group rate. All of these accounts were as of January. So these numbers versus current number of accounts, these change. They fluctuate month to month. And these are all the ones that are utilized currently. The contract actually has several more five times a week or six times a week in different levels. These are based off of our current actual sanitation accounts. So the current rates from TDS are in the third column and then the current increase. This is the percentage that is added in addition to what we charge the TDS. So the difference is that current difference, which would be in column F, which is the sixth column. So for a commercial point five cubic yard for one time a week, TDS charges twenty-eight. We charge the customer thirty-five fifty-six with a difference of seven fifty-six. So that's seven fifty-six, that difference that we charge. The importance of understanding the difference is this is what covers everything else in that department. We have currently positions for two full-time employees, two part-time employees. We have all of the recycling. We do run the recycling center, all of their supplies, all of their needs. That includes outside, if we aren't able to find funding, the grass plus glass crusher, the the wood chipper, all of the extra things they do. Adalina does probably one of the best jobs with trying to utilize outside sources, donations, grants, to bring in all the extra. And when I say extra, I'm talking about all of the theme of projects. But what she doesn't get covered does come out of this as well. So the difference is what pays the salaries, the retirement, the benefits and everything else that we provide. Under the current increase, you'll notice that that percentage changes from one to another. It goes as low as eight percent to as high as thirty-two percent and recycle has no additional fees charged. Looking at the second page of the information provided, if we were to continue at the same rates, it tells you, and please understand that the TDS, because we finalized the contract literally at four fifty-three yesterday, have it signed today. Some of those rates were corrected because there was a couple misprints. They actually decreased for several of them. So this is based off what we had tentative prior to when we issued the packets. But for instance, the point five cubic at one time a week, the rate changed from twenty-eight to forty-five. The increase would be twelve fifteen, giving it a billing rate of fifty-seven fifteen for nine accounts. So it is important to look at how many accounts we have as well. The first several line items, those are all commercial. And then you have your permits. Permits are for individuals who wish to utilize the dumpsters within the city of Alpine, who do not physically live within the city of Alpine. These are typically a couple of your individuals who are literally right on the outskirts. We do offer permit rates to allow them to dump. They do get a permanent card. So if they were to stop by City Hall and utilize the dumpsters, at any point, we could ask to see their card if we know that they live outside of the county. We have not done that. Residential, residential is you. Residential is the big, biggest group. It's a little over, almost twenty-three hundred accounts. That has changed. Like I said, month to month, that number increases and decreases. As customers come and go, we see the most increase for residential when we have the university, being of every semester, we get a fluctuation of people moving out of the dorms and into houses. So you'll notice, sorry, my computer apparently it is. So you'll notice that currently residential under the new contract would be forty-three thirty-eight. That's what we would charge. And under the old contract, it is forty-three thirty-eight. The first year, there was no difference. So this would continue at the same rate. This column with the percentage is what we really need to discuss. I added a little information at the bottom that I really would like everyone to be aware that these are estimates for what TDS would get and what the city would get. Based off of the number of accounts at the time that this report was printed. That number will fluctuate up and down. So I just, I took a screenshot and ran with it so that we'd have something to discuss. So looking at our current contract, the city, I'm sorry, looking at the contract we just ended, if everything had been left the same, we would have brought in a little over three hundred and thirty-eight thousand for the city. That covers everything in the sanitation department. Currently with the same increases, we'll be bringing in three hundred and twenty-four thousand nine sixty-five. So it is a decrease because rates went down. So rates did go down for some of the commercial users. And that's the big key here is residential pretty much stayed the same on our side and the commercials where you see the decreases. If I, and I didn't provide this other section to you, these are kind of my playlists. I didn't want to overwhelm you with all the different options and numbers. But one of the things I'd like to get your input on tonight is do we want to do a flat percentage? Do we want to do a flat increase rate? Like, you know, with the gas department, we had eight fifty to every, to every bill every month. It's a flat number. So I did look at the different options and I set it up that as, as we discussed, I could give you an idea of what the rate would increase to, what the difference would be. Looking at a twenty-five percent increase across the board, the residential rate would go from the forty-three thirty-eight, if you did just a twenty. Depending on which level of commercial they are. If you do a flat rate and I'm utilizing the residential because those are the largest accounts. And you did say twelve fifty of average billing. You would go from thirty-one, or sorry, forty-three forty-eight to forty-four oh four. And that's just the flat rate. So I just would like to get everyone's thought process so that at the next meeting, we can propose a set rate. The rates do change this month. So when we send out the billing in April, for month difference. Commercial would take the biggest hit if you change the current breakdown, yes. Or we could leave it the same. There's not a big impact on everyone, but it doesn't change where we're at with residential. But the key to the contract wasn't always about the pricing. I know it's the big concern, but we discussed the need for the bulky pickup being monthly. We have additional dumpsters coming in, the recycling, the marketing. We included performance and maintenance of the dumpsters. We added so much that we currently did not have documented in a contract that the pricing does reflect little change. So if we want to keep the rates the same and make no changes, we can do that. Or if we want to reevaluate a flat fee or an additional percentage, we can do that as well. Your residents are your biggest users. But we tried to ensure that there was no compromise that we're going to provide you so much additional availability with with the recycling, with the garbage, the bulky to try to balance.
Well, if you keep the rates the same as they've been in the past, are you comfortable with three twenty-five, three hundred and twenty-five thousand income for that department?
Yes, from an income perspective, that is not going to hurt that department. And I say that because we've had some, we haven't filled one of the positions. So that gives us a little bit of leniency, but this is a snapshot of when those numbers were full. So if next month we have, you know, two hundred new accounts open up, that number will fluctuate higher. So I'm not worried about it dropping lower. And I think ideally it would work out. It's comforting to the commercial businesses because they're not getting hit with those large increases.
I think we all leave it the same. The commercial accounts might have been going up to a hundred dollars a month. That's a lot of additional impact on their profitability.
It is. And this is, like I said, the change is in addition to what they've been dropped. So some of your accounts would be over four hundred a month.
Well, I would suggest that you present to the council at the next meeting, a proposal to keep the rates the same.
I can't explain how the initial rates were set. And it's been kind of a in the back of my mind problem because I want that piece of paper that says this is what the city decided. When the original contract was signed, I really don't know what, it council even really had any say in it. But the commercial accounts are charged higher by TDS, but the city does not charge a higher percentage. So your lowest is from eight percent to, I believe, eleven percent. Your, the point five, those are your special ones. Those aren't, those are the ones that are, I want to say they're the poly parts, the little trash cans. And we have nine accounts and their increase is twenty-seven percent. I don't know if it's just they're not used as much, some of those odd billings that we call them. But like I said, when this was all put into place, we continued with it when I came onto the city for, because I wanted consistency. I didn't want to go month to month, not knowing when this had been in place for three years pretty much already. I can account for why the current increases are the way they are. Commercial doesn't get hit as hard as your permits, your residential and your poly part for commercial. So if you leave the rates the same, there is a slight increase, but the commercial doesn't get hit as hard. The residential stays the same. Yes, from a billing perspective, you don't, oh, well, let me correct myself then. You don't have to raise for everyone, but you want to ensure that you can cover what we budgeted for the year. We had to budget based off of a whole year, not up until the contract with TDS expired. If you recycle, doesn't get charged anything extra. They get just the regular TDS rate. They don't get charged any extra increase. All of the other commercial ones currently, like I said, get more from eight to twelve percent. So your most common ones, if you notice, is your one point five weekly. There's would go to ninety-five twenty and it's currently out one hundred eighty. So that's actually less. That would be a good TDS question. Commercial typically does get charged more because they tend to, in some cases, produce more waste. They're running a business. I know Jerry will argue with me because not all commercial operate that way. Most of our commercial accounts, if you look around town, it's your stripes, it's your hotels, it's your restaurants. They get charged by the size of their dumpster. So they can get anywhere from one point five to four cubic yards. So if you go by stripes, you see the real tall ones, those are your four. And they get smaller and smaller. And then they get charged by how many times it takes to pick it up. We have very, well, we have several that are at your, your four cubic yards, four times a week. I know for sure two of those are restaurants. Your restaurants do produce a lot more waste. And your hospitals also got commercial, so Ross will fall commercial. So some of these commercials are a break this first year because the price decreased from the contract. Your residential has stayed the same if you go with this percentage. But you can change it if you want to do all commercial ten percent and you want to, you know, lower the residential and that's why we're having this discussion. So it's been recommended to leave them as their current rates. And that's why they have options as well. One pickup a week, two pickups a week, three, four, five. What you're seeing is what we have for our current actual users, actual accounts. No, no, that is a whole separate issue. And what you'll get when, at the next meeting, it will be a resolution with the proposed, the changes. And you'll get it for every account that's in the contract so that you can see the current before it. And if you'd like, I can also put it for a whole ten years. So you can see all ten years and how the changes. I'll get all the information back to you. I just wanted to have an open discussion. I'd like to get a little bit of the frog for you, so that you have a safe understanding when it gets. I won't give you my spreadsheet that has five different options. It's easy for me to, to go through them, but I will definitely lay it out for the 10 years. That way you can see how it affects the month. So I put this on the agenda before I really had the whole conversation with Judge Conno and the task force as a whole. We did go out for a request for qualifications. What you have in your packet is the two responses for qualifications. And I wanted to kind of give you an understanding. When we go out for a request for qualifications, we're asking a vendor or a company to come back and tell us what they can do for us, what they can provide, what resources they have, their credentials, their references, anything that can support them providing the service to the city of Alpine. An RFP allows us to go out and actually have them give us income. This is what we want to do, and this is what it's going to cost based on what you proposed. When we were working as a task force, and we still are, we backtrack, we still are working as a task force, the initial conversation was, let's get an RFP out there, let's get going, we're going to jump on this. But then there were so many different thought processes and ideas. The hospital district might help us out, the hospital itself might help us out, the county may take it over. So over the past two months, it's been a back and forth in conversation. Commissioner Ortega, a couple meetings ago, made it very vocal that he wanted, give us the information, get it out there, you know, kind of the, I don't care how you do, just do it. When we met as a task force shortly after that, we all agreed that, and we were kind of spinning our wheels and not going anywhere. So we put out the RFQ. In order to do the RFP, I had to know exactly what we needed, what we wanted, the type of employees, the type of ambulances, the types of certifications, response times. It's a large amount of information. JD Newsom was trying just as hard as I was to try to figure that out. We were looking at the one that the city had pulled from the City of Alpine, that kind of laid out all of this detailed information. At the end of the day, when the task force met, it was, you know what, we need to get something out. The RFQ was the fastest to just get information back, see if there's anyone even interested. We were making an assumption that maybe no one would even apply or submit anything. The city did receive two RFQs. One from City Ambulance, which I believe there was someone to hear earlier. And then one from AMR. AMR is Aero Care, who currently is assisting the hospital in some of their transportations. And they provided what's in your packet. It doesn't look like a lot because we didn't ask them for detailed pricing and all that, so we didn't do the RFP. But we had two services come back interested in providing services to the city of Alpine. And the hospital has also reached out to help us. And they have spoken to another vendor who's also interested. And that vendor has discussed with the task force and, you know, all this information has been, kind of been going back and forth. I wanted this on the agenda because I do want the public to understand that we are taking this seriously. We want everyone's input, but this affects more than just the city. It affects North Brewster County, and it affects us as travelers. If I'm on, you know, Highway 90 and I get in an accident, I do want someone to respond, whether I'm in the county or in the city. And speaking with Judge Conno and Greg Hennington, they have set up a call for a special meeting for the county commissioners for this Friday. We've posted it for a city workshop in conjunction with the county so we can have all of you present to have that conversation, not only with the county. And this is no action item whatsoever, this is just to be able to have a sit-down, good conversation. And they've invited all three vendors who have shown interest in the city of Alpine and North Brewster County. They've asked each of them to put together a presentation in order to kind of present where they're coming from. You know, City Ambulance is new to the area, they're currently in Andrews, is that correct? So to get them to like have that face-to-face. Greg Hennington, Judge Conno, and myself are going to try and get, well, not going to try, we're going to get a list of questions that we feel that are important, that may be overlooked so that there's not that dead silence time where people are trying to think of something to say. We want them to provide the input and understanding of what they can provide. The ultimate question for both entities and into all of the public is, what is it going to cost? Under our current conditions, what we have currently budgeted for the future as well. We're also looking at, you know, how long do you go for a contract? Is this a three, a five, a 10, or one? Help us out till the end of September. And these are all things that we've been discussing repeatedly. The cost is the biggest issue. Mr. Hennington and JD Newsom had put together kind of an estimate of what it would cost if the county did it. And when we reviewed it and we looked at it, you know, we all were kind of like, well, that's not too bad. But in reality, we knew that it would probably be more. We would have the hiccups that we would have to take care of and not the responsibility of a third party. When we contract, ultimately, they're responsible for their equipment, maintaining and providing those services, doing it in-house, especially new staffing, regulations, equipment. It may not have been feasible. So we keep moving forward with, how do we do this, what direction do we want to go? And Judge Conno and I both thought, you know, we need to have a sit-down with both entities. We've done our due diligence to find every thought, aspect, option, anything that we could do that may load in the burden on the city and the county, but they're just not out there right now. And we know that there's a lot of funding for EMS services, but the county or the city would have to become the entity to run the service. And neither one of us are in a position that we can do that. The staffing alone would probably be the hardest part for us. So I wanted to get this on the agenda, I've had it on pretty much every agenda. I wanted your input, your thoughts. I know that we've kind of not had a full-blown conversation on it because we've been working, letting me work with the task force to better understand even the direction we wanted to go. I thought the hospital district was going to take it, and I was all for it. Didn't happen, and that's okay. I mean, this is why we do, we do, and why we're here, is to have this conversation to serve our community. I do encourage the public, and I do encourage the council members to all attend this, what we're calling a workshop. They're calling an actual call meeting. To ask those questions, to meet these individuals one-on-one. But I would like to get your input on anything that you guys, you know, want me to note for questions. We are trying to go into this with a very open, we want to know, we want to see how this works. We want to get your guidance, your input. Not only what can they provide for us, but we're bringing someone into our community. We want them to be part of our community and ensure that it's not just the service that they're providing, but they're providing the support to our community as one of our community members. If you're more than, I don't know if you wanted to say anything, I know you have to do a presentation on Friday.
Pretty much, we're also aligned with one in Creighton, Texas.
So you're prepared for Friday, right?
Yes.
She's with City Ambulance, if you want to introduce yourself to the council.
I'm Celeste Sweeting, I'm the marketer for City Ambulance. If you have any questions or anything. Okay, I'm sorry. So City Ambulance is based out of Houston, we've been running since 2006. We cover about 80% of Texas, we're the third largest EMS company, I believe, in the state of Texas. So we have experience as far as that goes. Our headquarters in West Texas is in Andrews, and we have units in Odessa and Memphis, Texas. I believe we're putting another one in San Angelo soon, so, or Loveit, Loveit area. Correct, yeah, so we have, our trucks have, we have a medic on every truck, and I believe they would hire staff here or in the area, they would be here. So we're actually working with air, but as of right now, we're not contracted with air, it's for strictly ground. Yeah, so actually, they were talking about it, they have, they, they're going into contract with another company, I'm not too sure who it is, or air, but it's, right now, it's on one fix, so.
So one thing I do want to mention when we look at contracting or whatever the decision is made, which direction to go. We are looking at mine, our ambulance services in Alpine, air is an added bonus. We aren't looking for ground transportation, that would be between the hospital and whatever vendor they choose. But they would, from that hospital to another hospital, if they wanted to go by ambulance and not by air. So that hasn't been in discussion, it's just been the ambulance service for North Brewster County.
Yes, thank you. So these are some of the questions that we should come up with, we'll get to the meeting on Friday?
Yes. And that's some of the big questions for Friday. Like I said, I know Judge Conno and Mr. Hennington, he is a wealth of information, obviously, because he runs the ambulance service. And it is, what is it going to cost us? How are these companies going to come into the city of Alpine? Get the ground running with, you know, maybe some compromise on the cost. So it's actually two separate contracts. And the city has its own contract, and the county has their own. So they negotiated their own setup. Pricewise, the county charges monthly a little over, I want to say close to 15,000 a month, and we're 13,300. The city does not pay the same amount as the county does. But the county does have more travel and more, more distance to cover. And one of the things we've talked about is, if you're not aware, my bond is currently suffering. They don't have the ambulance service that they have. People retire, people move on. So they have an ambulance, but no way to use it. So those are things that. Yes, that should be the case. No, 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 no. I know each person who's been interested has kind of sent a formal request by Mr. Hennington to do a 10-minute presentation, and then to have it open for questions for all of you. But you are correct, Chris, that the bottom line and everything that everyone is concerned with is that price tag. We have been very fortunate, despite anything and everything with the stutters, they provided a service to our community for nothing. I can't answer that, but I could definitely put that in an email to break. I think that is one of the questions we've asked. I am not, I'm not 100% sure.
Well, just for information, Jacobs, Fort Stockton, their county budget is $2 million per year.
The staffing, the qualifications, meeting the state regulations, the equipment. When the county wanted to crunch numbers. So that is an item for discussion. There are several options, two separate contracts, we could try to do one contract with both entities. I would need a legal view on that one. We could do an interlocal agreement with the county, they take on the contract, we basically just cut them a check every month, every quarter, every year, if you want to handle that. There's the three options. So Friday really is, is the first opportunity as partnerships with the county to start putting this in paper and pen and crunching numbers. Ideally, we have 60 days from today for. We work as a team and not me coming back and telling you, well, so-and-so said this, and that, 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 what is it? Information doesn't always come out the same way as it's presented. But for you all to firsthand get to have that conversation and work it out. Of course, the action item is not on the plate, and I'm trying to make that very clear for Friday. Don't want to violate the TOMO rule or regulations. But at some point, we will have to put this to vote for either, like I said, an interlocal agreement with the county, an individual contract for just the city, or a joint contract with legal guidance. I definitely wouldn't want to sign into a joint contract that puts either party in any type of jeopardy if one decides, well, you know, I don't want to do this anymore. We want, we want those securities. I don't foresee that happening, but there's a lot of things I didn't think would happen and have. I want to just make sure that we secure the city and have that service for us. Yes, they've all been brought to the ready. Well, I just want to get that out there, and I look forward to everyone being present for Friday. They did a lot. I don't know if there is actual way to apply for grant funding for ambulance services, but that actually leads into our next discussion items perfectly. And the one we applied, yes. In the time of grant. Which is great introduction to our city council priorities and goals. And I've mentioned a few times, I, I want to do things differently, especially for this fiscal year, moving into the next fiscal year with the budget. A lot of what I get for feedback is having that cohesiveness between the council, the boards, the departments, directors, and one of those big things, and the city has tried, and unfortunately, we're lacking in it, is the planning, the strategic plan, the priorities. And since I've been with the city, you know, the priorities have been the roads, and when you look at the roads and you look at the fact that we didn't pave or do anything for two years, how is that a priority? When you look at the condition of the equipment, and you had Eddie Mullen are up here saying, I want this piece of equipment, how is that not addressed as a priority when paving is your priority? We've started the budget process for the department side. And I am starting very early because I want departments to take pride and take hold in their budgets, so when this goes to council, when this gets approved, it's a clear path of understanding of what they want to do, where they come from, what they've accomplished, what they have, what they don't have, it's a whole storytelling book. But one of the things I have mentioned to them is, is their priorities and your priorities may be completely different, which means the conversations won't be easy, because you, you want your departments to succeed and your employees to succeed, but if they're not on the same page and you're not on the same page, you just go back and forth, and then there's no final decision, or you have an unhappy employee who says, you know what, I'm out of here. I want us as a team to have those priorities and goals, and I put it as a discussion and information item, because I really want each of you to kind of take a moment, and they don't have to, to, to be high-set goals or high priorities, but to have kind of the conversation, understanding is, what direction do you see this city going? And I've mentioned to Eddie that, you know, I've been spoken to a few of you, and bring paving back in house. Two million for contracts, and I mean, we have done what, what we're paying for, and we have new roads, and that is exciting, because it has lessened the burden for Eddie while he's trying to catch up with seal coding, but to give those employees the equipment, the staffing, to be able to, to be a street department, public works, to take pride in what they do. I'm a broken record when it comes to the water and wastewater, I mean, they have probably more priorities than you and I are, are aware of, and most of their priorities are to meet state compliance. TCEQ is not our friend at the moment, and you can't blame them, I mean, we have struggled in band-aid things, and we haven't actually fixed it. Am I saying that we're going to be able to do this like that? No, the reality of it isn't, you know, there. But we're trying, and to have those goals and priorities meet the departments will help, because then everyone's moving in the same direction. And looking at your, your public works, your water, your wastewater, your gas, and having that, you know what, I, I want them to succeed, and I want them to be able to do their job with the resources that they need to have, and what they're looking at doing, and what you're looking at doing is on the same page, and if it's not, having the, the conversation and compromise to, to address those concerns, I think would be a, a huge benefit to the city of Alpine. From a, from a legislative perspective, you guys pass the ordinances, you pass the policies, and, and as a manager, you know, I'm required to enforce them, and to have the employees and the staff understand how, you know, what the thought was when we did this. I think it's a great benefit that if they understand where you're coming from, what you're looking for the city in the next one, two, three, four, five years, and what they're looking at, and, and understanding that, you know, the wastewater plant, you know, it, it's suffering, and this isn't an easy fix, but to have that available, and, and, and to understand that, you know, council's supporting us, and they know you're supporting it because they've seen the changes, we've moved money specifically to help the wastewater plant. But to have this as a visual priority and goal, and to include this in our budget book, that when the public looks at it, and, and any other one looks at it, they know that this is your priorities, these are our goals, and this is how each department is going to match them and meet them. I know, Ms. Rodriguez, you had mentioned about performance, and, and how do we handle, you know, a performance type of budget, this is a step into it, and the reason why I look at the performance, because I think it's great feedback, not only for the public, but for, for you as council members to know, if I'm looking at the priority of paving, and I look at my budget, and I'm giving them four hundred thousand dollars to do something, but you don't know what they're going to do, we approve an amount, but to have that detailed information that says, we're going to do A, B, and C, city council's priorities are A, B, and C, and everything kind of lines up and flows, as we move forward over the next year, and, and the future years going ahead, you have that storybook, you have that, you know, this is what council wants to see, this is what your constituents have given you feedback on, this is how we're improving it, this is how we budget for it, this is how we are accountable for it. It's not just a book with a bunch of numbers, it is an actual, this is what we want to do for our citizens. So, I put it on the agenda just to get it out there, get it in your heads, because it is one of the items when I talked about the budget process, to understand where each of you want to go. I, I, I do believe deep down, we all have kind of one of those, I want to accomplish this, I'm still trying to get my financial stars from the state, and, and we want to succeed and do those, I think putting it on paper makes it more realistic. It's not a conversation, it's not just a passing by, it's, this is what we want to do, and this is how we're going to do it. So, the departments have all been prepped, and we had a long conversation, these are their budgets. And as long as they follow the policies, the ordinances, state law, federal law, their budgets allow them the, the mobility, that if one project is not realistic, that we shift it in councils of worry, you know what, I'm shifting this project to this project, but it's still in line with your priorities. Having the emergency conversation, you know, we don't plan for emergencies, that is hard, I mean, bigger cities tend to have a little bit more money to play with, but to understand as we're planning and putting those in place, that, you know what, if we have another emergency like we did with the, the gas department, we have something set aside, we put in that little what-if. It's really important, especially over the next couple months, and, and I, I, I'll send out little emails, I'll give you guys calls, but to get that input back from you, so that as we are finding from a department level, that we are in line with what you guys want to do for the city of Alpine. It is important, we're elected for a reason, and we, we want to showcase it. Don't use the word you want to use, huh?
Yes, absolutely, and also, you know, for years, I've always said, you dig up the screen, you check the infrastructure in it and replace it. You know, why, why, free table screen, and then come back, because you've got a water leak or whatever, and you have to set it all back, that's a waste of taxpayer's money. Hey, I mean, I've said it to the last couple of administrators that we had, and that's happened, but, you know, on review on your page, let's get it done right now, you know, we have the, we only have enough projects for that, meet their needs. You know, and, you know, I got to look at some of the sewer lines out here, contracts have dug up all over, looked at, I hope, yeah. This was put back in, in the day.
Sixty.
And it needs to be upgraded. And we need to look at, you know, where it comes coming from also to support this, but these are flowers that we need started with it quickly, because...
I kind of liked the, the, the floor for us, for that survey, where, you know, I've got our priorities, and we listed them, and we talked about them, and we typed up, and we're able to sit down and look things through and get a response to you. Things have kind of changed now, and I think if we maybe did that again, you know, what priorities, what they were, what our first one is, what our second one was, it's changed from the first one that we got, and maybe if we did that again, and then submit that to you, and maybe, get all that information together, and what our priority is, across it.
And that is one of the items we discussed last Thursday, was for them to start developing their priorities and goals for this year. So, it's already on their plate. Partially, we are going to redefine what a capital asset project, CIP, capital improvement project, compared to an asset. When we need a piece of equipment, unless this piece of equipment is to replace a whole entire fleet, we shouldn't have to prepare and put it as a CIP, it's something that the city should kind of look at, if it's a one-time purchase, if we need to lease it, rent-to-own, as you may say, but looking at it differently. A lot of what you saw in this past year's capital improvement plan was items that are needed to do their job. It's not a, a plan, it's not a, I want to replace all of the sewer infrastructure on the southwest side of Alpine, and in order to do this, we need to plan out five years, ten years. The plan is ideally more for your projects, your long-term impacts. It's vital that we really do consider that more and more, and this is why I, I, I like the part where we talk about grants, to lead into the priorities and goals. We can't continue to just go out for whatever we want, because there's so many parts to the grant that come into play. The time management of it, the reporting of it, the matching of it, the ensuring we do things correctly, the procurement. I want us to go out for every little thing we can, but at the same time, you want to ensure that what we're putting it towards is not a band-aid. It is an actual need and resource for the city, or an actual long-term investment in the plan. And I think this also gives us guidance for the grants to, to really search and go for the ones that may be a priority, EMS. Is there something we can use for funding for that? You know, doing the, the, the survey again and seeing, is there something that specifically grant-wise can cover that? Poor Chief LaSoya is always getting after me about using those ARPA funds, you know, that was money passed down by, by the federal government. We've allocated the first portion, and it was presented to you specifically for the wastewater treatment plant, because they need it, they are suffering. And one of the items that just came across my, my desk was an actual conversation with our current engineer in the water and wastewater, they are going to submit a PIF in our favor. It's a, it basically, it's a, we want to do this plan, but in order to do this plan, they actually have to submit the full concept, it's not just the band-aid, it's start to finish engineering costs, estimated costs, what needs to be fixed. How do they know? We have been very fortunate that, as a city, we asked them to do a, a full-bolting evaluation of our wastewater treatment plant, something that should have been done ten years ago. They've completed it, they will get presented before council, but they have this plan in place, this evaluation, supporting documentation, supporting information, numbers, so they're going to submit this all to the Texas Water Development Board as a PIF. If we were to get awarded this, this could possibly be a full four-point-six-million-dollar project, and that is what they're estimating to bring the wastewater treatment plant, plant back up to where it needs to be. It could be a partial funding, they could say, you know what, we're not even going to support you, but the PIF is just the foot in the door. There is no ties, guarantees, commitments, it's just, hey, we have this idea, we're going to throw it out there and see what y'all think. When that comes back to the city, whenever they decide, that's the important part, that's the plan. Is this something that the city wants to take on, and, and that will be the hard discussion to have. The city does not, or has not planned for that debt. The city doesn't have a match if they decide to match it and not fully fund it. The city doesn't have that little piggy bank that we could crack open and just say, here, we're going to just pay our portion. But these are things that, from priorities and goals and grants perspective, we can go out for if we plan accordingly. And we do the footwork, so when these items come up, we're not scrambling. We scramble when it comes to doing some of our grants, because we don't have the adequate information, the resources. Sometimes, you know, it's literally, we, we could have applied for this, but we didn't have an engineer staff. We didn't have someone who would say, you know what, you did it all correctly, okay. So, these are things, as we look at grants, that we need to be aware of, and when, you know, Marcy and the department head or myself come before council with, we want to go for this grant, this is what it's going to take for the city to do. And you are correct, Chris, sometimes the grants don't go to the next year, we're applying a year ahead, two years ahead, the airport's still wait, waiting for the construction for a project that was approved three years ago. So, it is a timing thing. And there are a handful of grants that are considered kind of like a matching, or if we're lucky, the USDA will have a pot of money and say, you know what, you know, we've got fifty thousand, what do you need? But it's knowing, what do we need? We don't want to just go out for whatever, we want to ensure that what we get is something we need. Currently, the USDA, we're trying to get two applications before them, one for park equipment, we utilized them in the past with money that was already budgeted for a new tractor, they paid the difference. And we're looking at that the same with the parks department and then animal control as well. And they would like to get a larger incinerator to handle that demand of animals that are unfortunately coming in, that, that need to be taken care of. So, knowing the direction the city wants to go ensures that we find the funding that is needed to go that direction, and department understands that, I'm not just giving you a piece of paper that says, I want this, I'm giving you a piece of paper, is this is my plan, can we do it? So, it's kind of like a, a snowball effect. We've done well for so many years, but we've done well band-aiding it, we've done well piecemealing it, and not fully like having a conversation with, we need to afford a, a whole project. Every department has a need, and if you listen to them, and, and you, you have those conversations, it's a need to do their job, it's not a need to itself. It's a need that when I come to work, I need my computer to turn on, I, I need a vehicle, because when I have a nine-one-one call, I don't know if I'm going to get to A and B. And, and those are the things that are unfortunately been in practice for the city, and I'd like to see that change. I'd like to have that, this is the direction we're going, and, and the, the department gets excited, they see the change, they see the, the, the need, the want, and they see the support, and that's important. And a lot of times, if you look at our capital improvement plan, a lot of those items have been on there since I've been over the city. Need a plan, just to fight the bullet on some things, and departments will compromise. Don't let them fool you, they will compromise, because they know financially there's a struggle, and so, if I need to, to take a step back in one of my line items, and, and I don't need to do that project, because this one is really more important to me, they understand that. Randy Guzman, perfect example, he had an emergency, he knew he couldn't address it, you know, it's not in the budget, and, and you know what, I, I won't do this improvement this year, because I know I need to get this fixed for this, the residents of Alpine and Fort Davis. So, when we're going through this whole process, it is important to know what our priorities or goals are, because then it gives the directions for the grants, what money do we go after? I believe PD is probably the most fortunate when it comes to grants, because they are... I believe PD is probably the most fortunate when it comes to grants because they are several of them, multiple options, but there aren't the extensive, what does the city have to do and provide? There's not the matching half the time, but they are also becoming very detailed, very specific. And they're, they're cutting down on, you can't just buy what you want to buy. You need to buy what you need for your department. It's not a free-for-all. I say that because I've worked both county and city on grants and it's great, you know, we get a, we get a million dollars and we're going to go buy all these items. But technology expires, technology changes. The city has not done well with maintaining the technology. We get something and then we use it until literally it's not acceptable by any department. Like we're on a, a radio broadband that doesn't exist anymore. Basically like having an S O S system instead of a cellphone. So we're, we're taking advantage of the grants to benefit the police department on the technolog- technology side. There's a wealth of stuff out there. We have the huge grant that the federal government passed down, the billions of dollars for infrastructure. We're not equipped right now to handle something like that. And, and, and we're lucky because we're not having to handle it directly from the federal government. But now we have the regulations coming from the state. So the money comes down, the state gets our portion and basically says, okay, this is what you're going to be able to do. We're still following the federal guidelines, but now instead of it being a direct check to us, it's a portion of, and you can only use a portion of. And the big part of that bill is roads. We are possibly eligible for additional funding for paving for our local streets and our utility infrastructure. Those are the two big things. But we have to wait for the state to come back and say, okay, now we're opening it up to you. This is how you apply, this is what you can get. We want to have a plan in place so that when we do apply, we know that we're going to spend it on this project. We're going to spend it on this. When we received the CARES Act funding, it was a free-for-all. I'm, I'm not going to lie, from a finance perspective, it, it was all over the place. Everyone was scrambling, everyone wanted, you know, P P E and everyone wanted, you know, the social distancing and we needed to protect and we needed to do this. And, you know, we had employees who were out and we went through a whole fluctuation of COVID cases within the city. And all of that was, well, it's COVID, it's COVID, use the CARES fund, use the CARES fund. But from a procurement, from a keeping track of it and making sure we didn't have a full plan in place. We utilized it for what we thought was the best needs. And it worked, don't get me wrong, but moving forward, when we have these huge grants coming down and these huge opportunities, we want to have a plan for it. That way we know that the money goes to where it should go. And if we get audited, it's not going to get us in trouble. Do, so the departments, I, I just really wanted to get this out and in the open.
But that's good, then, you know, the public should be willing to really go that and like stay. But they also need to, again, that will give them that evidence to improve and take that situation, not all the funds, but lower crime. You know, as, as, as the funds.
And you will get a survey. I, 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 I won't wait, I, I will leave that out probably within the next week or so. I really do want us all to say.
Kind of look things over ahead of time and kind of get things through. That's why I like.
And I, I will get together with the directors and then we will schedule a workshop. Like I said, they've already had that conversation with taking a, a different approach to our budget. It is theirs and they should take pride in it and they should know what they can use it for. And it's not that anything's been done wrong in the past. It's just, I, I made it kind of clear that I'd like to take a different approach and do something different and have everyone on board so that, that there's not the conflict, the conversation, the why didn't know. It's all out and the departments can take pride. So the peddler's permit ordinance and candidacy. I'll be sure. One of the things that Gio and I and now my executive assistant, as we continue through the year and the years moving forward, is cleaning up those ordinance. And there are some things that are outdated. There are things that are, are questioned that we're kind of like, we don't know, that was done in 1978. One of the things that's come up is, is the canvassing side of the peddler's permit. Currently, our policy has a canvasser shoot a viper permit and it's good for 90 days and it's.
$50.
$50. This has never been enforced since I can even remember. Daryl, I'm going to call you out, I apologize.
Daryl Graham. You taught me back in 1996.
There you go. We've had a couple individuals who are either running for office or are going to be running for office, inquire about this permit because it is a city ordinance. Ordinances, of course, are passed by council and the city employees and then the city manager enforces them. It's really hard to enforce something that you know has never been done. I wanted it to get out there and, and I know right now, you know, the election for the county, the primary is coming to a close, but we have city elections coming up. And in order, in my opinion, to run for a city office, you should follow the ordinances in which you are asking to be enforced. And that makes it really hard when you know that they haven't been enforced. But as someone who's running for office, you want to do your due diligence and you want to do your best. If you're running for state office, you know, you want to ensure that you're, you're, you're following through with the, the state and local ordinances as well. So we've had individuals ask about it. I thought it best to put it on the agenda to get that information and discussion. I would like to propose that perhaps we remove the canvassing sign or we ask that they get a permit, but we waive the fee. The permit is important and, and Daryl may or may not agree with me is it's providing kind of that regulation of where signs go to ensure that they follow the state guidelines. When you run for office and you do your posting of your political signs and advertising, you do have to follow the state guideline, guidance. And I think it's important that maybe we put that in the ordinance specifically. It ensures that things are done correctly, but it also gives us kind of the opportunity with, and I know that the state has it in there, you can't keep them up all year round. It can't be up there four years after you ran for office either. So that's where kind of the enforcing part comes in is, is putting the, the guidelines in there correctly and up to date and then having that enforcement being that you can only keep it up during certain times. That way, if you ever drive down the road and you'll see signs before Jim Fitzgerald was elected the last time. And that's why we want to clean it up. What we have is the ordinance and I'm going to refer to Daryl because I don't know on the state side. Do you guys regulate the state side of it? Gio was reminding me that the peddlers and the permitting is different than the canvassing and the signs for candidacy. So if we clear it up and all that and make it a little bit more specific, I, I think that would provide better guidance. Do we charge them the fee? Do we penalize it if they, they don't apply or they don't follow the ordinance? Code enforcement, we actually are working on that. We've come up with an internal solution, I'm super excited about that, but that's another day. We just really wanted to address the canvassing because it is becoming a bigger, bigger visible issue. I think that's a great idea. We currently have a fee, we currently have a permit process, we currently don't follow either. I want to get it cleaned up and removed because as positions change and people change, let, let's make it clean, let's. I, I, I think separate it out, follow the state rules.
I think we are violating state policies.
Do we need to regulate whether or not they can put up signs? Do you have assigned ordinance? Then maybe we just need to reference the other entities for sign rules.
Follow state guidelines. You have to have at the bottom of the sign saying you can't put it in right away. If you put it on a private residence. I don't think we can just force them to do it.
You know, but yeah, you're supposed to, you've got a time.
That's why it's a pretty discussion today.
Well, the state has a whole guideline for signs. And it's in the ethics committee for the state election.
So then a simple reference to just follow the state.
I mean, if you're running for city for any political office, Laura normally will direct you to the information you need to get to run for office.
That's why we're having this conversation, so that we can put something together to get ready. Then we will type up something presented to council and we'll have to have a person's, like, name for ordinances and get this cleaned up so that this is an issue for November or for May 7. We do want to get this taken care of because it has been questioned, it has been brought up. I approve the second and final reading of ordinance 2022-02-01, an ordinance amending chapter 10, animals, amending article 1 in general, amending article 2, keeping animals, providing for updated regulations regarding the restraint and empowerment of animals. Please note that this item was not open for public hearing. I approve the letter of support for the aerospace and defense technologies training centers proposed in U T I P's Build Back Better Regional Challenge Propulsion.
I will make a motion that we approve a letter of support for the aerospace and defense technologies training centers.
So yes, in the conversation back and forth, there was an indication possible financial assistance or in-kind contribution. In light of where the city currently is, we are providing moral support. We, we do want them to get this in, before with the project, but at this time, the city doesn't have those available resources.
Well, this is all based on a grant from the federal government.
Yes, from my understanding, there is a match. I believe it could be anywhere from 20% or more. And there's an in-kind contribution as well available. We're just not in the position, but we do encourage.
And I think the letter will be by the end of this month.
I approve the Alpine Police Department 2021 racial profiling report.
I would make a motion, we approve the Alpine Police Department 2021 racial profiling. Sorry, Daryl. We needed a motion before we even make a discussion.
Thank you.
To add on to Judy and Chris's comments about the water department. They got the blue envelopes today to make the system go over, which is fantastic. And also Judy and I have been working on revising the advisory board outlines and responsibilities. Thanks to Gio and Megan for their help. And other than that, I appreciate all y'all and Keith and your department and Daryl and yours and everything everybody's doing to make this bounce.
Well, if you are on Facebook or you are on our website, we launched a PSA today on the changeover in the building indicating all of the updates, the changes, the water, everything. So I do appreciate your patience.
So thank you everybody for being here. A lot of information and, you know, a lot of times it seems I don't talk on that, but information comes in, go out to the public. No, hopefully, I see. You don't want to hold anything in hiding, but that's out there so that folks know what's at your disposal. And be great down there. And then Gio and people break down. Return the city to a different direction, a positive direction. And I know how being terminated in a couple months and whoever the mayor is, I hope, continue to move forward with the city. I guess something new to the city and I think it's a good thing for us. So hopefully it will help the team. Thank God very much. Okay, and we don't have an exception.